Good evening. We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. I'd like to recognize our city clerk and turn some time over to her for roll call.
Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Dykens?
Here.
Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We would like to invite those who would like to participate in our invocation to stand with us. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Ken Miller of Grace Lutheran Church, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious God, as we gather for the community of the city of Kingman, be with us in our conversation and business affairs during our meeting. We ask that you care for those who are elderly and in need of protection. Provide for the health and healing of all residents. Help us maintain our growing community with the public services needed. We give thanks for all who serve in law enforcement, fire department, EMTs, and others who provide for our safety and well-being. Help us steward our funds for the benefit of the community. Guide the decisions of all who lead. In your name we pray. Amen.
I will lead us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating there to. Item number one is awards recognition, 1A Elder Abuse Awareness Month proclamation. The good folks over at WACOG, Western Area Council of Governments, has reminded us that June is Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our communities. June 2025 marks the 19th anniversary of recognizing elder abuse awareness. Its recognition will promote a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older adults. And the Western Arizona Council of Governments Area Agency on Aging recognizes the importance of taking action to raise awareness, prevent, and address elder abuse. And as our population lives longer, we are presented with an opportunity to think about our collective needs and future as a community and recognizing that ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States. And recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that proper social structures exist so people can retain community and societal connections, reducing the likelihood of abuse. And preventing abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social supports like senior centers, home and community-based services, and transportation will allow everyone to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our communities. And whereas where there is justice, there can be no abuse. Therefore, the Western Arizona Council of Governments Area Agency on Aging urges all people to restore justice by honoring older adults. Join us in our engaging and empowering movement and putting an end to abuse. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the city of Kingman, do proclaim June 2025 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month and encourage all of our communities to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our country. And of course, myself have signed it, witnessed by our city clerk, Annie Meredith. WACOG does a lot of special, takes care of a lot of special people, especially the elderly in our community, and we are thankful that they are there to do that. And of course, once again, let's remember that June is a special month for recognizing our seniors. Moving on our agenda. Item number two, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Clerk Meredith, do we have anybody tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I did fail to mention and recognize those who might be participating through our internet or watching our YouTube channel, but it doesn't look like anybody's even participating as far as online for tonight. Moving on then to item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, we had items A through G. Is there anything that needs to be pulled for discussion? Or are we all good with them? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion then to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four, action items. 4A, consideration of resolution number 5533, adoption of the fiscal year 2025-26 tentative budget. The fiscal year 2025-26 tentative budget reflects the attached revisions from what was presented at the May Budget Work Session. The tentative budget sets a ceiling on appropriations at $309,859,823. The final budget scheduled for adoption on June 24th, 2025, can meet but not exceed the amount adopted with this resolution. The tentative budget is within the state expenditure limitation as modified by permanent base adjustment. Staff recommends approval. Tina, good to see you tonight.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. While we are nearing the end of our budget process, with this is the next to last step in our budget adoption process. So the tentative budget before you this evening does include the revisions that we discussed during our recommended budget work sessions in May. I do want to cover the couple with you before I ask you to consider adoption of the resolution to make sure that we captured those requests and those revisions correctly. So we made some changes to the Louis Kingman Pedestrian Access Point Capital Project. There was council consensus to only fund that project if it was with grant funds and not with city funds, so we moved those monies into the grant fund or moved that project into the grant fund. And then there was quite a bit of discussion on the $950,000 that we were budgeting for the recreation center design. Ultimately, it was decided to move $900,000 of that design into contingency and keep $50,000 in the capital projects fund for that project for public education and marketing for the recreation center. And with that, there were no other changes, and there are no changes to the appropriations either. So what was brought before you at the recommended budget is the same amount that is brought before you this evening. So tonight, I am asking you to consider adopting or approving resolution 5533, which will set the tentative, which will set the budget ceiling for the tentative budget at the $309,859,823. And just a reminder that that does set the ceiling for the final budget, meaning that when we go into the final budget meeting on June 24th, that you will no longer be able to exceed that dollar amount. You can increase and make all sorts of changes. It just can't exceed the dollar amount that you adopt this evening. And with that, if there are any other revisions or questions, I'm happy to help.
Counsel, any questions for our finance manager? Okay, thank you, Tina.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Then can we have a motion then of item 4A, consideration of resolution number 5533?
So moved.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. 5B, consideration of, or 4B, I'm sorry. Consideration of resolution number 5557, expansion of the sign-free zone. In December 2011, the city council approved resolution 4766, establishing a sign-free zone in historic downtown Kingman and the major corridors of the city. Resolution 5557 replaces resolution 4766, keeping the previous location and adds a section of Andy Devine from Michael Street to Castle Rock Road, the city limits. This resolution is in accordance with Arizona Revised Statute 16-1019 and prohibits the placement of political signs within the rights of way specified. Staff recommends approval. Welcome, Jason.
Mayor Watkins, Counsel, thank you very much. Tonight before you is truly just a two-part. So the first part tonight is the expansion of the sign-free zone, which we've talked about, resolution 5557. Little bit of background, this particular sign-free zone was established back in 2011. That was by via a resolution 4766. And this really was to protect the corridors that were determined to be of historic significance within the city boundary. The city boundary has since expanded. However, there's been no expansion to the sign-free zone. And so coming before you tonight is the approval, what we're asking for is approval of resolution 5557, which would also repeal 4766, which would expand the sign-free zone in accordance with ARS. So the next couple exhibits were the original exhibits that were included not only in your packets, but in the original resolutions. They're a little bit difficult to read, but we have some cleaned up versions that we'll show you as well. And again, this was hotel tourism corridor number one. And then this showed the expansion that comes down into the Beal area as well as Walupi Mountain Road, and of course, down to Andy Devine as you approach Interstate 40. So this kind of gives a little bit better exhibit of where that particular area is in accordance to the existing city boundary. You'll notice that in the area just before I-40 along Andy Devine, the existing sign-free zone stops. And again, this is just showing a better illustrated exhibit for that within the downtown area. And then upon the exhibit that's shown here, this shows the expansion area in green. It's approximately two miles, and it actually would pick up just the south side of the 40 and extend all the way to the city boundary. If adopted, this exhibit that's shown here would be the new exhibit that would be included in the resolution, which would be the sign-free boundary zone. Ultimately, it does repeal resolution 4766, which was passed by the council in December of 2011. It expands the sign-free zone to include coverage that further protects Route 66 from sign clutter, visual blight. It supports ARS 16-1019 and the regulations regarding political signage. Ultimately, it does uphold our city's local sign ordinances, which really seeks to have signs that are compatible with the city's unique character and environment, ensure pedestrian and traffic safety, prevent damage, injury, or litter caused by improper signage, and protect property values, local community, and quality of life preserving the enhanced street scape. There's no agency or public comments associated with this. This is not a public hearing. Staff is recommending that the council go ahead and make a recommendation for approval, take action, thereby adopting resolution 5557, expanding the sign-free zone. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comment or discussion? Okay, thank you, Jason. Counsel, then, can we have a motion approval, for approval, item 5, our 4B, approval of resolution number 5557?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jason. Item five, public hearings, 5A, ordinance number 1976-Z025-003, zoning ordinance amendment, temporary signs, political signs. In 2021, city of Kingman zoning code was adopted, establishing a new zoning code. Political signage and Arizona Revised Statutes 16-1019 is currently only referenced in the approved zoning code as an end note at the bottom of table 4-90.070.F, standards for specific temporary sign types. And 0Z025-0003 is a staff-initiated amendment to section 4-90.070, adding subsection 4-90.070D, which provides additional information and establishes development standards regulating the placement of political signs within the city of Kingman in accordance with ARS 16-1019. Staff recommends approval.
Mayor Watkins, Counsel, thank you. So as discussed previously, the staff has been going through the city's zoning ordinance and making various recommendations and improvements to the ordinance so that way we have clear defined standards. A little bit of background, the existing ordinance does currently refer to the political signs, but it is only in a footnote version. It does actually refer only to the ARS regulations. And what staff is proposing tonight is that we actually adopt the ARS regulations into our code for clarity purposes. One, for those that are running campaigns, but also for staff and its enforcement capability. So as you can see on this exhibit, this is the only reference to the ARS 16-1019 regarding political signage. It is still enforceable in our code as it stands today. However, it does require any applicant that's proposing to utilize political signs to actually go out, understand what the ARS 16-1019 is. This will actually bring that into the code. This also allowed us to look at some of the other cities. We looked at various ordinances that were adopted by other area cities for political signs. We looked at a couple things. One, we wanted to make it very clear as to where they could be. So that is, the amendment as part of this would be that they could not be within the site triangular area. And they currently aren't now, however, it's just not very clear. So we're making it very clear in this ordinance that they cannot be in the line of sight issue, which does impose safety issues for pedestrians as well as for traffic. And the other one is the expansion of the sign-free zone, which we took the action on prior to this. I will not bore you with all of the text, but again, the text that is being proposed is that straight out of ARS 16-1019. And this will amend section 4-90 to allow for 4-90.070D. And we are just incorporating those standards directly into our code, which talks about where they can be with respect to right-of-ways, with respect to public safety, and so forth. It does require that the sign contain the name, telephone number, candidate, campaign committee contact person. This is a lot of information that we are already getting through the city clerk's office when they do actually submit their information and pull candidate papers. However, this will also give us the ability to follow up with those that place signs that are placed within our right-of-ways or in areas that do cause traffic or safety issues. We're able to make contact with them to get them to remove their signs and relocate them accordingly. And the last part of this is really incorporating our site triangular area, which is already part of our existing zoning code. We're bringing it into this section for clear reference for those that are referring to it. The next couple exhibits are really just that of what it would look like in our code upon adoption and codification. Ultimately, the proposed amendment updates the city zoning code to provide for additional detail and clarity regarding political signage, provides guidance regarding political signage, which aligns with the existing temporary sign requirements of the zoning code. And it's supported by the findings prescribed also in the zoning code as well as that of our general plan. This did have a public notice. This is a public hearing. This was advertised back on May 13th in the Kingman Minor. No comments have been received to date. Planning and zoning commission in a regular vote, in a vote of 7.70 at its regular meeting on May 14th, recommended approval of ZO 25-003 to the Marin City Council, as such, staff is recommending approval this evening. Available for any questions or comments?
Any questions for Jason? Actually, Jason, I did have one. You showed the cities of Phoenix, Glendale was on there, I think, down in the valley. What about our sister cities up here in Mojave County?
So we looked at Mojave County. There were no, we looked at the ones that had disparaging differences. So they were very consistent with our existing. Either they were only referring to them as a footnote or again, very minimal, minimal cuts. So we went and looked at where were there other things in order to help control proliferation or blight when it comes to political signs?
Good, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions for Jason, let's open a public hearing then. I'd like to open this public hearing for ordinance number 1976, temporary signs and political signs. Is there any comments from anybody here in chambers? Who would like to say anything about this? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Go ahead, come on up.
I'm Dave Schmitz. I have a PhD in political science, and sometimes I use it. And I would like to say that any time those in power want to...
You need to address the...
Oh, sorry. Well, anytime people in power want to say, hey, this is where a sign can go, this is where it can't, that makes me somewhat anxious. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Okay, we will close this public hearing. Counsel, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion approving 5A, ordinance number 1976?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. 5B, ordinance number 1978-RZ25-002, Walupi's Edge rezone of 11.04 acres from R-1-2020, single-family zone, minimum lot size 20,000 square feet, to R-18, single-family zone, minimum lot size 8,000 square feet. RZ25-002, consideration of ordinance number 1978, rezoning of approximately 11.04 acres from R-120, residential single-family, 20,000 square feet, minimum lot size, to R-18, residential single-family, 8,000 square foot, minimum lot size, located south of Interstate 40 and east of the Rancho Santa Fe interchange. Assessors parcel number 322-12-006. Applicant Mac Hall of Iris Development Services for RSF Partners LLC. Staff recommends approval.
Mayor Watkins, Counsel, thank you. So before you tonight is a rezone application, 25-002. This is rezoned approximately 11.04 acres associated with the future Walupi's Edge subdivision. As shown on this particular exhibit, 11.40 acres proposed to be rezoned from R-1-20, which requires a single-family zoning with the minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet, to R-1-8, also a single-family with the minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. This exhibit shows the surrounding properties and the respective zoning. So to the east, you have properties that are zoned R-1-20. Beyond that, you have properties within the subdivision located Sandstone Street and that east of Rancho Santa Fe. And then to, or to the west, I'm sorry. And then to the east, you have properties that are zoned R-1-8. And this is also part of the overall subdivision area associated with the applicant's proposal. To the north, you have parcels that are zoned R-1-8, as well as C2, which is commercial. And again, C2 and R-1-8 to the south. The general plan for this area is low-density residential and medium-density residential. The proposed zone that is being amended this evening is consistent with the residential land use designation of the general plan. And for clarifying purposes, and what some of the concerns that have been brought forth is that this is a small cleanup. This is within the overall subdivision area that's being proposed by the applicant. This essentially sets more at the center of their overall project site. The 11.04 acre spans from Luis to the north, to southern, to the south. And ultimately is designed to clean up an existing zoning boundary that actually isn't consistent with the city's GIS and with the plat that's being proposed. You'll be able to see that there's still an R-1-20 zoning designation to the west. And again, what's being proposed is consistent with the zoning to the east. Just for illustrative purposes, this is the subdivision proposal that staff is currently reviewing. It does show the area of the lots associated with the R-1-8 designation. However, the areas to the east of the lots that are platted, that are being proposed to be platted, are the lots that would still remain under the R-1-20 designation. This allows for overall separation of about 700 feet from properties that are along Rancho Santa Fe to the smaller lot category of the R-1-8. Overall, the proposal is consistent with the city's general plan. The zoning itself does allow for the implementation under the medium-density general plan designation. It does allow for the implementation and supports residential growth in alignment with the purpose and the intent of the general plan. And it does meet and to help support the needs of the housing, future housing needs for the city, as well as support a future commercial development plan within the vicinity of the interchange. Overall, the lot sizes are consistent and it does intersuitable for the size of the homes, as well as providing access to the project area. Public notice was sent on May 3rd for this particular meeting tonight. Site was posted on May 14th and was published in the Kingman Minor also on May 14th. Opposition to this project had been received with respect to the rezone, both before the planning and zoning commission as well before the city council this evening. In total, we received seven letters of opposition. There was one late email that was coming, that came in this evening as well in regards to just considering the infrastructure in the area as development occurs. Staff did respond to those that we were able to. Of those responses, two of those, upon receiving staff's response and the understanding of the project, they had withdrawn their letters of opposition to the project. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the proposal at its regular meeting on May 11th and then voted 6 to 1, recommending approval to the Marin City Council based on the findings contained in the staff report. RZ25-002, an application to change the zone of the 11.04 acres from R-120 to R-18 is hereby recommended for your approval this evening. This is a public hearing, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason at this moment, at this time?
We can bring him back up, right?
Yes.
After we hear public comment? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jason. This is a public, we would like to open a public hearing on this matter on ordinance number 1978. We have a number of citizens that have signed up to speak and share their comments. Ms. Barbara Carpenter, would you like to come up? Well, you signed up first, Barbara.
Yeah, I know. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. Is that better? Okay. I went to the planning and zoning meeting that they had. And my question is, why do we have to do this now? Why can't we delay this until the interchange is completed so that some of that traffic that's going to end up on Walupi Mountain can go the other way? We are just, we're inundated with vehicles. And another, I don't know, how many hundreds of houses are going in right now off of Yavapai and those that we're talking about rezoning for? That's going to just put that much more pressure on Walupi Mountain Road. I sent a letter to Mr. Mokwin and asked him about two of the commissioners that I felt should have recused themselves. One of them said, well, I might as well go ahead and vote for this because it's going to get overturned anyway. But he lives in Rancho Santa Fe, so I felt that he should have recused himself. But he lives in Rancho Santa Fe, so I felt that he should have recused himself. The other person is a real estate person. And Mr. Mokwin stated that since that person did not live within 300 yards of the rezoning, that it was not in conflict. But I would think that if you have, some of them are selling real estate, that they are going to be very much involved with selling the real estate that's going to be built. So I still believe that that person should have recused themself also. I mean, I understand, totally understand that we want to expand our tax base and that we want to grow. But I want to do it a little bit smarter than we're doing. And I don't see why we can't delay this until we've got some avenues to get the traffic off of Walupi Mountain Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. And next we have Scott Klenischlink. Did I kill your last name?
No problem. I'd like to say I, I too also attended the rezoning hearing and it was rubber stamped. There should have been people that should have recused themselves from that. With that being said, if any of you on the city council stand to gain any benefits from these extra houses going on there, you need to recuse yourself as well and let that be made known to the public. The cleaning up the lines excuse, in my opinion, that's a crock. I posted this rezoning sign up here on social media a couple of days ago. So far, it's had over 300 comments made on it. Most of those comments do not support the rezoning of this area. Not only that, they, they are opposed to the uncontrolled growth that we have here in Kingman. I mean, we have the lack of infrastructure, the lack of medical, the lack, lack of shopping south of I-40. The gradual, the zoning I feel should be gradual, not straight from a half-acre lots to our 8,000. You're going from putting half-acre houses to approximately 2.5 houses on a half-acre. That should happen gradually. In addition, Angles already building 300-plus homes, scheduled to build 300-plus homes there at the end of southern in the county area. Additionally, they're building probably 40 to 50 homes on Luis. So far, there's only two exits out of, out of that area. That's unsafe. In case of fires and things like that. And since I've lived up here, we've had two fires out there. You know, I, I'm in agreement that we should put a lot of this stuff on hold until we get that interchange in, take some of the pressure off of Luis, off of southern, off of Walupi. I've lived here three years and to get up from southern up to Walmart and things like that, time's almost doubled as far as trip-wise. Going through Stockton Hill and the Divine Intersection. I've been there and had to go through two or three cycles of lights just to get through that intersection. You know, what about the police, the fire, schools to keep up with the growth? As far as I've, I've been to a couple of these meetings, a couple of the county meetings and the rezoning meetings, and quite frankly, it seems to me that a lot of these people, a lot of these politicians are bending over backwards for all the developers while giving the residents of Kingman the bird. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next we have Gary Skubal.
I, I don't speak as eloquently as them, and I didn't come as well prepared as them, I'm not going to lie. But I do have some concerns. First off, this does back up to the back of my head. I have personal concerns. Not, it's going to kill my property value, that's real. But more than that, my real concern, I've thought about this for a long time, coming in and talking about this. I'm a principal at an elementary school. Do you want to know how many open classrooms we have at our elementary schools in this city? Walupi's packed full, Manzanita's packed full, Desert Willow just moved a class to my school. I have one classroom. If we keep making lots smaller and allowing people to move into this town without building their real infrastructure, some of the streets, some of the schools, some of those, and I don't speak for the school district, I'm speaking as me. We're going to have a real problem, real fast, because we're not going to have spaces for kids to go in the classrooms. So this isn't just about this development that I happened to see the sign while I was walking my dogs. And I'll tell you right now, the sign was not placed very well, was passed, it was placed behind the no trespassing zone for the new construction. So if I hadn't walked my dogs back there, I'd have never seen it. Fortunately, I got a letter because I'm close enough, but I feel like that was a little bit sketchy. But I will tell you, we need to, somehow our developers and our planning people need to figure out a way to say, okay, here's a big development. Somebody's going to have to build a school because we have a place, we need to have a place for children to go when they move into Kingman. That's my real concern right now is that we're already strapped, the state doesn't pay us very well. And building buildings isn't cheap. And our buildings, other than Desert Willow and White Cliffs, all of our buildings are 30 years old. Three of our elementarys were built at the same time, 30 years ago, and all their roofs are leaking real well. So I'm just going to say that I feel like, honestly, you're going to increase your tax base, but what's it going to cost you in the long run? And where's the burden really going to go? Is it going to go back to the kids and the school district and all of that kind of stuff? So I think you need to think about those things in the future, not just in this one personal incident. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next we have Audrey Reed.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. We did receive the notice and I see that there's a great desire for growth, but there has to be balance as well. My concern is not just the size per lot, but it also would be, as the other people have mentioned, about the infrastructure. We all know how it is when it rains here. And if you go along the roads that go from southern to Luis, there's a lot of flooding and things like that. The question's about infrastructure and the participation of these builders to correct that infrastructure as well as to make sure that the roads, drainage, and all the other things that go into it. It's not just building houses and downzoning. It's a lot of other things that go into it. And if we don't have that arsenal, that ready to go and tell the developers, look, we like that you're coming here. We're glad that you come here. Some of us may not be. But at least we know that we have some ability to control the fall, if you would. We have the ability to say, look, these roads need to be developed. We need to have this much infrastructure. They may not want to help pay for it, but we need it as a city because the budget, which was just discussed, only goes so far. So zoning at 8,000 square feet would bring more density. Some people like it, some people don't. But the bigger issue is, we have a southern avenue that is like a crooked stick and all the traffic is going to go to the freeway. There is not currently budget, as I understand it, to go from southern to Luis on the outside of the Rancho Santa Fe development right now. It's a dirt road. It's where the sign was posted, where we probably go down there and take the dog to walk. But I have been told, there's no money for that. The 26 budget is bigger than the 24 and the 25, 26 budget has more money for roads. But I had looked at that and I, I wonder if that road from Luis to southern on the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway is budgeted and in event that you approve this, is the developer of that 11 acres who also has 430 additional acres, maybe they or someone else in their group, how are they going to look at developing or assisting with the development of the roads? In other cities, they have things like a sphere of influence that says, any new developers coming in? Hey, upfront, just to let you know, you need to plan in your budget, not ours, to help develop with these things for our infrastructure. Because we're still going to end up putting markets in school, as this gentleman said. And growth is not bad, but how we do it. This is our moment. It could be amazing, or it could be another high-density thing that's not bad. But we need to make sure that there's infrastructure already in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Next we have Mike Baldesley.
Hi there. I live over on Sandstone also. And just, I just have a few things. There's, I was doing a little research. We already have over 1,150 homes in the Kingman area that are up for sale, that aren't selling, right? You know, they're taking 60 days for that. Now we're, you've got over on the, what would it be, the north side of I-40, you have a proposal that there's going to be more homes built over there. There's, there's Angles building over off of southern and Walupi there. It, it's just, you're getting a whole bunch of houses built, but they're not doing anything with infrastructure. I mean, there's no grocery stores out in that area behind us, anywhere near us. It, it, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense that we just let these developers come in and just build, 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 and don't do anything with infrastructure. Why aren't they having to foot the bill for, if you want to put 3,000 homes in, why aren't you building a school? You know, something like that. Which you can, you can force them into if they want to build that bad, because they're making money. And that, and that's what it's all about. Also, I, I noticed that, well, if you start adding all these other people and everything, how's KRMC going to handle 10,000 more people? You know, it, it's just, it's, it's just not going to happen. You know, and, and I understand that you need more things around here for doctors and everything to come here. Well, that just comes down to money, what you offer them. Everybody does well when they get handed money. And that, and that's same with the developers. They want as many houses as they can put in there to, to make more money. Which, okay, fine and dandy. Not everybody moved to Kingman or came, or live in Kingman to be like Phoenix or Las Vegas or California, God forbid. You know, it, it's just not that way. You know, we, we're a little happier that we don't have a Walmart, or I mean, a Target or something like that. I don't really care about that stuff. I just like the little simpler lifestyle. That's why I'm here. And I already see that our water is going up 13%. Our electricity, we already buy out electricity. How are we going to accommodate this many more people? It's just things that we need to think about and start thinking about the people that are here instead of just ha, you know, everybody else that wants to move in here because they're going to get a better price. So it's just something, you know, think about the people that are here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next we have David Jacquez, or Jacquez?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Dan Jacquez. I live over on Gemstone. I recently moved here, well, not recently, two and a half years ago from California. And I did that because I hate California. You can't do anything, you can't go anywhere. Well, guess what? Like Scott was talking about earlier, I went, I was going downtown earlier today and it took me three traffic cycles to get through the intersection of 66 and Stockton Hill. What are we doing before we start adding more homes, which everybody's doing? I've been to the council meetings for the county and they just divided up one of Angles Homes properties right behind our house on southern, and they did the same thing. They took one acre, 10-acre lots and turned it into 8,000 square foot homes. They're doing the same thing now. This developer is talking about doing it on the other side. Well, like the gentleman just talked about, what are we doing, and this is your responsibility, what are you doing for the infrastructure? I want an eye, eye exam and it takes me four months to get an eye exam. I need a heart treatment done and I can't even find a stupid doctor that'll come to Kingman because the doctors that come quit coming. We don't have hospitals. KRMC doesn't support, can't support what we need right now. This is on you folks. You're supposed to help grow our community. Tim, you got it. You're the city manager. What are you doing to grow our city? To make it to where we can live and we don't just become a bunch of houses? And yes, the developers are making money. And yes, Kingman's making money from taxes. But you come down southern after eight o'clock at night and it's a racetrack. Well, when you put in the Santa, Rancho Santa Fe Parkway and then you build another 500 houses out there, guess what's going to happen to Luis and Rancho Santa Fe? And I hate to remind you, but remember that crash we had a couple of years ago that killed them wonderful young children? What are we doing to fix that problem? Where's our infrastructure for police? Put some roundouts in. Spend some money to traffic control. Spend some money to develop Kingman so that we can be the community we all moved here for. To enjoy the solitude of a wonderful, welcoming, small community. But if we're going to grow, we got to be able to handle it. And right now, we're not handling it. Because we can't live when we can't get treated for medical conditions. And oh, by the way, there's a whole lot of old people live in Kingman. And we got a whole lot of medical problems that come with this and we can't get treated. We got to go to Phoenix or Las Vegas, or maybe you get lucky and go to Lake Haffensville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Okay, last, we have actually Mac Hall. And of course, he is the applicant for this change. Mac?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Mac Hall with Iris Development Services here representing applicant RSF Partners on this rezon request. As staff has mentioned, we're looking to rezon 11.04 acres, which roughly extending the boundary 200 feet to the east to facilitate our subdivision and remap the, I guess, the common development plan that was approved back in 2007. This rezon is still about 1,000 feet from Rancho Santa Fe Parkway. And with as some of the residents have mentioned about improvements and so forth, that we are obligated to improve Luis Avenue to a minor arterial. Also extends sewer and water to this development. Also, there's development agreement in place that will improve Rancho Santa Fe Parkway once a certain number of houses are met. I'm here to answer any of your questions and so forth, and thank you.
Thank you. Carl, could we ask Mr. Hall questions since he is the applicant?
It might be best to, to finish your public hearing and then have some of those questions.
Bring him back up. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this item, even though you haven't signed up? Okay, we would like to close this public hearing. Counsel, questions? Do we need to bring Mr. Hall back up for some questions?
Um, how about Mr. Mokwin?
Mr. Mokwin? Jason, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council.
I would just like to know if you took really good notes and can address most of the comments? And then I'll wait to ask you my questions if you haven't addressed them.
Certainly. So as I was taking notes, I know some of the, the concerns that came up in regards to infrastructure, I think that's probably the easiest one to address. The applicant has addressed it as well. There is a, an agreement that goes back to 2007 when the majority of this project site was originally rezoned to allow for the future subdivision and development of it. A development agreement does have stipulations in place that as development starts to occur, they do have to improve certain streets before they get certain occupancies. So just for an example, they've got to have, let's just say Rancho Santa Fe and Luis in, in its entirety, built to its full width, if that's the case, before like the 300th occupancy that's issued. It's just an example. I'm, I'm not citing the agreement off the top of my head, but just as an example. So infrastructure is coming with this project. So roadway improvements, sewer, water, and so forth.
All the way, all the way to southern, correct?
All the way to, correct, to southern. Yep.
Thank you.
With respect to schools, as the councils, where the schools, the, the school district does get to weigh in and provide comments in regards to our rezon applications as well as our subdivision applications, none were received. The schools do receive funding through the state. They do their own planning when it comes to their facilities and so forth. So the, the schools, as they take the, the information that we provide them, they start doing their, their facility planning. With respect to the conflict of interest, I will speak lightly and I'll defer to our city attorney if I miss anything. However, conflict of interest is if there's a monetary gain. If the, if either the two commissioners were specifically representing this property, they would have to recuse themselves. If they had financial interest in the property, they would have to recuse themselves. If they lived within the 300-foot radius of the project site, they would have to recuse themselves. They did not come- They did not come upon our noticing under any circumstances or terms that would indicate that there would be a conflict of interest. That has been vetted, and I'll defer to the attorney if I've missed anything. With respect to medical hospitals, I think those of us that are residents and patrons of the city, I think we all are wanting the same thing. Those things come as you end up with development, you end up with commercial infrastructure and so forth. I guess the common example is, you know, if you build it, they will come. I know that that's, that again is something that we are looking for. And I think... With respect to Ms. Carpenter, she did, she did point out the concerns in regards to the conflict of interest. I did address those accordingly. I know she mentioned it was yards, 300 feet is actually the, the radius listing that's required to, to be outside of that conflict of interest boundary. Any questions that I may have missed?
Vice Mayor?
I do have some. So you addressed infrastructure. So we know that as the development begins to build out, I believe we've got a couple of different phases. The road is going to go all the way to Southern from the Rancho or Flying Fortress Parkway, correct?
Correct. The exhibit that's being proposed, Vice Mayor, is the exhibit that shows Phase One, which has the lotting that's in question, kind of where my cursor is. That is Phase One. Phase Two would continue down to Southern and come over. This project is picking up the existing natural drainage that's coming across. And again, this isn't the purpose of tonight's review, but I'm just kind of giving you to it so you understand the infrastructure that comes with it. They're also picking up the drainage that's coming from this direction. Phase Three is the, the properties that are in the R-120 designation, which is going to be in this location here.
Okay. So in addition to infrastructure, drainage is, is, or could be an issue. Can you tell us how drainage is, is addressed when doing a project like this? And that it was considered? I'm sure that the developer had to mitigate the drainage and come up with a drainage plan. Could you speak to that?
So the zoning itself allows for the residential by right. So with that being said, we are reviewing the future subdivision concurrently. Again, not part of tonight's application, but we are reviewing it in advance. The applicant is picking up the drainage that comes across the site. It is being conveyed across to the north side of Luis, where there will be a retention base, and this property is also owned by the same developer or property owner.
Okay. Now, let's talk about the buffer zone. So the buffer, which is going to be intact with the exception of 11.04 acres, is that correct?
That is correct.
So what is the remaining acreage in that buffer, removing the 11.04 acres?
I will defer to the applicant because I don't have that map information in front of me.
Jason, do you have that other map that shows that long sliver also, but it shows not this one?
That one. Yeah, what's, what's the acreage for that, that minus the 11.04?
Overall, that's about 400 acres. Looking at it proportionally, I would say that's roughly about 200 acres that might be left, maybe a little bit less. Again, just a, a, a guesstimate at this point.
So the buffer zone that will remain intact is over 200 acres, and that will remain the R-120?
Rough, I would say roughly estimated.
Okay.
70?
Yes.
70 acres.
70 acres. So 70 acres as a buffer?
Yes.
Okay. So let's talk, let's talk about the timeline. I know transportation and, and traffic and all that was brought up. Let's talk about the timeline, because I did go back and I did watch the P&amp;Z meeting, and that was, you know, infrastructure was a big hot button and the traffic was a hot button. So give me the timeline for the Flying Fortress completion and the timeline for this project to start, and how are they going to coincide or intersect, or is one going to be ready before the other?
So I believe the interchange, based on its schedule, is roughly around summer to late summer 2026 for it to be open and accessible. This particular project, again, they're still in the early phases of the review of their, their subdivision. I should say the early phases, but second round of comments. They're looking to move forward with their pre-plat this summer, so roughly around July. Their pre-plat should go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and come back before this body. Their final plat likely before the end of the year, and that would be, again, just for Phase One, which is the area that's indicated here.
So the earliest that they could start building would be mid-2026-ish?
I would say yes. And again, I defer to the applicant if he has a defined construction schedule, but that would be the earliest.
Okay, all right. Just trying to, trying to get a timeline as to when this infill could happen, the selling, you know, construction of the homes, the sale of the homes, and the cars on the, additional cars on the road. So lastly, that other piece that's next to it, the R-18, that is already zoned R-18, correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is correct. It's already zoned R-18.
So there is nothing that can be done to reverse that or, you know, change what is already done? That is R-18.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, yeah.
And if they wanted to put that plat forward, it would get approved and move through the process, and they could begin construction?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right. Just trying to put this all into perspective, if you guys can track with me. So those were all the questions that I had, that I wanted to get out. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Counsel Saly.
In relation to previous comment about part of this is already zoned R-18, we're not talking about the, the whole area, and houses will be built on this section of land, whether this happens tonight or not. Can you tell me, with the rezon, how many more houses are we talking about than if that section was left R-120? Sorry, are you going to?
Well, Jason, too, I think that previous slide that you had up shows, okay, so now, not where that, all that density is, but the one, that street just to the left of that, that's where all the, there's half-acre lots across the street from R-18 lots, correct? Is that the way it looks like?
Yeah.
Mayor, Vice Mayor. So if this were to remain the R-120, the assumption, without taking into any of the streets, any setbacks, things of that nature, the R-120 on the 11 acres would result in roughly 22 units, 22 homes. Under the R-18, results in 59 homes. And again, that's, that's not taking into consideration the streets or anything else that goes into this project.
Okay.
That's just gross.
I, I feel like he has a, a more accurate number with streets and, because he, he was ready to jump up.
So based off our conceptual layout right now, we're about 1 and 1/2 to 1 lots. So with the rezon, we're getting every, for every one lot, we'll put 1 and 1/2 in. It's not a straight, a straight 3 to 1. So with our layout that we have right now, it's about 1 and 1/2 to 1 increase.
Okay.
And for the, the construction, go back to that. With, by time houses are ready to go CO, you're probably looking in the, you know, middle of '27, early '27, middle of '27, before actually homes are complete, if everything goes smoothly. So that's where the interchange is, we've done way before the homes are being CO'd.
Okay, thank you.
Mac, don't leave yet.
Yes, sir.
Counselor, go ahead. You were, you were still talking.
Can you tell us about the phases? How, how many homes in the first phase? And how long do you, are you predicting it'll take to build out the whole development?
Well, I think the first phase is approximately 150-some lots. Phase Two is roughly the same. Phase Three is probably in that 70 to 80 range. Looking for complete build-out, sell-out, it's all market-driven. It's pretty hard to tell. Know that the developer is a builder also, so I think he'll probably sell some to a block to builders and build a lot himself. So like I said, from a sell standpoint, it's all going to be market-driven. But from a construction, to be able to build, we're probably looking in summer, fall of '26, to be able to go vertical.
Do you have some projections, though? Like, we hope to have this whole thing built in 10 years, 15, I mean?
Well, we hope to have it all.
Sometimes people think the whole thing will be built in one year.
In optimistic terms, we would like to go, once Phase One is designed under construction, we're in the process of designing Phase Two. And then we won't, they probably won't start construction on Phase Two until 50 or 6% of Phase One's probably built out. That way, they always have inventory rolling in, but not too far ahead of the curve.
Question I've got, well, it's, it's actually just a comment, and I'm just throwing it out there. You have R-120 lots, it looks like two 1 and 1/2 streets of R-120 lots, and then right across the street, are you going to have R-18 lots? Marketing-wise, do you think that's going to be an issue with people? I mean, people are going to want, the R-120 lots are great, because they're almost half-acre lots.
I mean, from a, you know, from a first, you know, it depends on what you, what you want to buy. I mean, from a, I guess, a variety of lots that you're able to sell.
Okay.
There will also, I'm pretty sure there'll be a screen wall between our, you know, back of those lots, block wall. And also from, we have to have interconnectivity from a walk-in pass and things like that. So there'll be connectivity that way, too. But from the size and lot, I think we provide, you know, the double row as was originally intended in the original master plan, without, without buffer between Rancho Santa Fe and the R-18 lots.
I wish you did have the overlay where it originally showed the plat for R-120s on that street.
It's roughly down the center of
Okay.
the, the, the R-18 street. So it's about 240 feet were taken away of the R-20.
Okay.
Of the overall 1,200 that's already there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mac, since we have him up here?
No, but I do have a follow-up question for Mr. Mokwen.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
So when these projects are placed in planning, you guys are looking at the master transportation plan, correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is correct. Our, our discussions with this applicant all along has been looking at how to make this a comprehensive development, even though they're bringing in phases. So we've looked at the traffic, the transportation as a whole, as if all of this was going to be built in the phases all at one time. So that, those are all being considered as, as we're evaluating this project.
So you're looking at worst-case, like it's built out in, in the, in the initial?
We're looking at worst-case being when it's all built out, what those improvements would, would be required.
Okay. But there is a master transportation report out there, and I know that during P&amp;Z, they did ask to have a presentation on that. So that might help with some education on how our, our transportation intends to flow once we get that interchange.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, so with an actual specific TIA, they are doing a memo for first phase. They do have a traffic impact analysis that is doing an analysis for all of the infrastructure improvements, so the signalization and the roadways.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Jason? I do have a couple, actually, you, I think you addressed almost everybody, all of the comments that were made from the public, and I appreciate that. And, and of course, all of you here in chambers, we appreciate the comments. I did want to, I wrote down a couple of things that really, property tax, our taxes were mentioned, you know, our tax base. We have to remind ourselves, City of Kingman does not have a property tax. We only are making money and surviving off our sales tax. And of course, there are builders' fees, there's other fees involved, but when a home is placed there, there is no property tax that we're paying, that we're receiving anything from. Because that was brought up a number of times, and I always want to remind people about that. The hospital, once again, we have no control over the hospital. It's a separate entity. They do have a beautiful campus right there, off, right there, just down, down the way. A whole nother hospital that's not even being utilized. I mean, it's, it's being partial, so there is room for that hospital to be utilized. Of course, we need to get doctors here. How do we get doctors here? That, once again, I wish we could do it, but it's the hospital that is in charge of that. One other thing was roundabouts, and that's a mixed blessing. Some of us like roundabouts, some of us hate roundabouts. Exactly. They do slow traffic down. I know Manager Walsh and I were talking about that. They do slow traffic down, so there are purposes for a roundabout, and they do serve that purpose. And they, they can be very safe. Do I like them? I don't, but I do see their purpose. So I just wanted to comment on those things. Once again, in the schools, once again, that's another separate entity that we have no control on. We like to work with all these businesses and entities, but we have no say with the schools. So, once again, though, all of you here in chambers, we appreciate your comments tonight. Counsel, anything else to talk about on this? Or ask Jason any questions? Okay. I guess we need a, a motion really right now, because SAC recommends approval, our Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on this. We need a motion for approving ordinance number 1978.
Show move.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing done, motion carries, thank you. Item number six, department reports, legislative update from Tom Dorn. Normally, Tom would be available, but actually, legislature is on recess right now, so there is nothing to report. So we just want to move on from that. Item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Starting with Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, nothing tonight. Nothing tonight.
Counselor. Counselor Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Ward? Counselor Saly? Counselor Dykens?
Nothing.
Once again, Counselor Dykens, we're glad to have you back in chambers today.
It's good to be upright.
Always, always. Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I just want to make a couple of quick announcements. Once again, remind everybody that this is First Friday coming up. As you well know, First Friday is a great thing down here in downtown Kingman, and a lot of festivities going on, and it's open from 5:30 to 9:00. So please, if you're available and in town, please come to First Friday. And then lastly, we will, our next city council will be after Father's Day, so I do want to wish everybody a happy Father's Day. And with that, I don't have anything else. Item number eight, request from council for up, for reports or updates. Yes, Counsel Saly?
Yes, I wanted to ask for an update on the item for 4H. When we can expect to see that come before council? How soon? Next meeting? Okay, so at least in the next meeting, but definitely the first meeting in July. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Yes, yes, Counselor Dykens.
There's been some emails in regards to, my mind just went blank, the activity at Lewis Park versus downtown, the fun, the 66.
The Route 66 festival.
Thank you, that one. Can, can I at least, can we hear what the differences are from having it at the park versus downtown? I've read all those emails, and I understand people's opinion, but I'd just like to understand what draws people to the park versus what draws people to, to downtown?
Okay. Good request.
Did you understand that? Because it came out muddy. Okay, thank you.
And how soon would you like that? Sooner the better.
Prior to the event.
Real good. Manager Walsh, you have your marching orders. Okay, if there's nothing else, counsel, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here.